We call a March 18th Board of Trustees regular meeting to order. Entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda items.
I'm moving second.
Probably moving second. Is Julie?
Julie's right there.
Oh, you moved. Alright.
If everybody else logged in, it should pop up.
Yep, is everyone logged in?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the motion passed, five zero. Entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
Make the motion.
Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved to second. Give it a moment to cash a vote. Okay, the motion passed, five zero.
I'm willing to vote you that.
Now, this side will have a budget update.
I'll do audible for that, but I would no.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Kennedy.
I'm better, good. Saw the doctor, changed medicine. Mrs. The attorney, the attorney, is he gonna be here?
Is this the same stuff that we have? I wouldn't. Is this the same document that's in our docs? That was sent to us, that was posted in the budget docs?
So...
Yes. It looks like it was. I was just trying to see if it's updated or...
So, Julie?
The answer is yes, except with the addition of the three slides that you added today.
Okay.
Three slides, right. Did you add three slides today?
So, unless...
If any changes you might have made between last week and this, this is the same document unless you made any changes to it.
So, this is a new document that was finalized this afternoon, so I would say refer to the hard copy, and then we'll get the electronic version updated this afternoon.
It has been updated, but I thought that Ms. Green asked if it were the same copy that was in the packet last week.
It is, okay.
It has been updated now.
Yes, now.
To reflect the changes you sent today, but if they studied it yesterday, it would have been slightly different.
Okay, right. Okay, sorry about the confusion. So, at any rate, good afternoon. And so, what I'm doing this afternoon is providing an update to the FY '20 budget. And so, I'm the only one making the presentation today for your information. At the end of the presentation, there's a slide that shows that we propose on the April 8th board meeting that we have another budget workshop, and so then we have the other chiefs come forward at that time to talk in more details about specific aspects of the budget. So, what I propose to do this afternoon is to give you an update on state and local funding, and overview of that, just for, sort of like a starting of an education-type process so that we could better understand state and local funding. And then, give an update on where we are with the fiscal year '20 budget development. As well, let's take a look at the projections, an update on the projections for fiscal years '21 and '22, and show you how those have changed because of things that we're putting into the, propose to put into the FY '20 budget. I'll give an example of remaining work to be done as we develop the fiscal year '20 budget. There was a question last week about charter school funding, how that process works, so I have a couple of slides that talks about that, and then give the next steps. What questions you have on the agenda, anyone? Alright, so, a little bit about state funding. So, there are multiple components of state funding. I have three here, Act 388, Education Finance Act, the Act of 1977, and the Index of Tax Payability. And so, with the state funding of education across all of the 46 counties, it's largely based on property values. So, you can see here with Charleston County's School District in fiscal year '17, our EFA percent that we receive from the state is 31%. So, for every dollar that we send to the state for redistribution of education through sales tax, we get 31, in fiscal year '20, seventeen, we got 31 cents back. Currently, in fiscal year '19, that number has gone up to 34 cents.
Oh, wow.
And for fiscal year '20, it's projected to go back down to 31 cents. So, we're not making a lot of progress. And so, you can see at the bottom here with the Clarendon County School District, which is a much poorer county, they received conversely 92 cents, dead in fiscal year '17. I assume that number is roughly the same, probably went up a little bit in fiscal year '20. And the major reason for that difference is that the index is based on property values in the state of South Carolina. So, here, obviously, in Charleston County, as depicted in these pictures here, we have a substantially larger tax base than a small rural county like, well, a rural county like Clarendon. I don't know the size of it. And so, the tax, the EFA state funding formula says that for states that have, counties that have a high property values, they should take on a greater percentage of their funding of education for their students. And so, therefore, our index is higher, and therefore, we get less dollars from the state than percentage-wise. The problem, the problem with that, the tension, rather, with that funding formula is the Act 388. So, what the Index of Tax Payability, EFA says, is that we, Charleston County, have the ability through our vast tax property base to be able to raise more money for education. But conversely, the Act 388 says there's restrictions, places restrictions on our ability to do so. And so, on one hand, we have the property; on the other hand, we don't have the ability to raise the property taxes. There's a quote I have on the slide at the bottom from Senator Sean Bennett, which is the state senator from a local area, that says, "If you want to improve education in South Carolina, start with tax reform." So, this is a very recent statement that he made when he was discussing someplace up in Berkeley County, education reform, and that challenges it presents the state legislators because of the restrictions of the complexities, the complexities of tax, the tax laws here in the state. So, for Act 388, when it was implemented back in 2008, I tell you what, let me, I'll get through that in a second. Let me go to another slide here. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One other point on this slide here. Up in the right-hand corner where it says, "Impact of Act 388," you see a small bar, a line graph, rather?
Yes.
And what that is showing is the variance between the sales tax, the red line, that we should have been collecting on the Act 388, and the property values, the tax that we could have collected if Act 388 were not in place. And last year, last week, rather, I presented that for fiscal year '18. That variance, that gap, that capacity that we were not able to tap into was $61 million. Not saying that we would, as an organization, as a board, you would raise taxes that high, but that's what the capacity that we gave up on the Act 388. So, which is the difference between what we could have raised with property taxes versus the sales tax relief that we got. So, in state revenue, the general fund revenue, the next two slides break out the percentages of our revenue. So, we got about 180-something million dollars from the state currently, and it's broken out this way. Restricted state funding, 19%, you see what those are for handicap, transportation, school, bus driver's salary and fringe, transportation workers' compensation, et cetera. So, 19% of that 180 million dollars comes through that, through that section. Another 18% comes through the EFA, which I talked about a few minutes ago on the previous slide. So, 18% from the EFA, actually, 18% from a portion of the EFA. The EFA is actually broken down into several components. So, the next component is EFA part-time programs, and you can see those programs listed there. So, we pick up 5% there. And the reason I'm showing this, this series of slides is to show, not necessarily at this point for you to fully understand state funding, because I'm still trying to come up to speed in some parts myself, but to show, to demonstrate the complexity of it and the need for, for a couple of things. One, for people, for us to become educated on that complexity so that we can have some influence on, if there's any opportunity, to simplify the state funding for education. So, that's the purpose of it, of those other purposes. So, the last slide on the state funding shows, again, continuing with EFA. There's 5% for allocations made to support programs that may not be included in the EFA. And I don't have clarity right now on what that is, so I won't get into it. On the right-hand side, other state revenue, you can see retirement reimbursement, that's 2%. The majority, or the biggest share, rather, of our state revenue of the 180-something million comes in through something called state revenue in lieu of taxes. And so, this is a tax relief, and so, we got 52% of our 180-something million dollars. And it's in what's called tiers, tiers one, tiers two, tiers three. So, tier one, we get about 17 million dollars. And what that is, is a tax relief for homeowners, that's the first hundred thousand dollars on their property values. And so, that was implemented some time ago. And then, when Act 388 was implemented, that, whatever a school district was getting was capped at that amount. So, we would get a 16.8 or something million dollars, and it's been capped at that amount. Tier two is another tax exemption, and it's for people who own their homes that are 65-year, over 65 years of age, or they're fully handicapped, or they're blind. And so, that's another amount that's tax exempt, and that for us is 3.5 million dollars that we're getting annually. That, again, is capped. So, 17 million dollars is capped, 5 million dollars is capped, it doesn't go up. And then, tier three is the sales tax replacement for the lost ability to tax a home, homeowner-occupied property, and that is tier three, and we receive around 72 million dollars annually, currently, for that amount. And that is the amount where I showed in the previous slide where there's that gap of 61 million dollars. So, if we didn't have the Act 388 restriction, then that 70-something million dollars would be, you know, it would be higher because we would have the local ability to do so. So, that is the state. It's a very complex series of calculations. And so, what my intent is, during the budget process, is to continue to provide information to try to provide some clarity on what it looks like. And then, the local funds, then, general fund, in addition to what, on the state, on the, on the general fund, we also get an amount from EIA Education Improvement Act that was in the early 80s, 1983, 84, I think it was. I think it's another 50-something million dollars, but that doesn't come through the general fund. Those are special revenue funds. And then, for the general fund, from local sources, the vast majority, the 97% there, is from taxes. This is the general fund, so that will come primarily from businesses, and if you own a second home, from that type of property. And also, delinquent taxes that have been collected from past years. I'm going to small amount, 2.46% fee in lieu of, I know on the board agenda this afternoon, there's a component, general item for fee in lieu of. And so, we get 2.4% of our revenue from fee in lieu of, instead of taxes. Tuition is a small amount, and you can see the other small amounts, investments, other local resources, sources, rather, in miscellaneous. So, majority coming in from the tax levies. Again, primarily from businesses and those types of properties, automobiles. So, questions on the, on the funding methodologies for state or local? Yes, sir?
How much money are we getting from local sources, roughly?
I'd say it's 200-something million.
Local source is 200-something million?
Yes, sir.
Close to 250 or close to 200?
So, the total general fund revenue is, this current year, 507 million. So, 180-something comes from the state.
I think one, but the local is two.
And so, essentially, the variance, most of the variance is state. And so, hold on a second. You have the exact number?
Just local revenue.
Yeah, Reverend Collins, I'll get the exact number for you, but it's...
Around 200, around 200 million?
It's well over 200 million.
Mr. Kennedy, if you, after you complete Reverend Collins' question, if you can, just go through the entire slide. I'll just have board members to write down their questions.
Okay, we'll do.
And then, we'll just come back and ask questions at the end.
We'll go.
Under the state revenue, when I go to the next page, to the budget page, budget summary.
If you have a question, then, right, he's going to go there next, so if you can just hold your questions at the end.
Okay, so then, I'll just proceed through the presentation and then take questions at the end then. So, the next slide here is the FY '20 budget summary. And so, this is an adjustment to the slide that I showed last week, where we showed 530 million dollars of projected revenue for fiscal year '20. And then, if you recall, there was a section that added into that revenue the amount, 6.6 million, I think it was, of designated fund balance. We had a portion there for the teacher salary adjustments. We have a portion in there for the early college, and a $3 million number for academic attainment initiatives. And so, and there was questions how we match up that revenue from, from the fund balance to the actual expenditures. And so, we made a change in the presentation so that you could see that. And so, once, and then you'll see that on the next slide. And so, our starting point, then, at the bottom here, funds available for allocation for fiscal year '20 is the 34.6 million dollars at the bottom. So, that's an adjustment to the slide that you saw last week. The next slide here, FY '20 budget summary. Again, that number at the top is the same from the last page, at the bottom, 34.6 million dollars. And so, what this shows, then, is how, what those required increases are next year, what those numbers are. And so, you've seen these from last week also. I saw them last week. Teacher salary increases 12.4 million dollars. And in the assigned fund balance, essentially from a savings account-type thing on our balance sheet, we had 2.5 million dollars for teacher salary. So, we showed that reduction here as opposed to revenue on the other page. And so, you can see the other numbers here actually are the same from last week. Additional 5% for teachers, 0.5% for teacher salary increases, which is for the first-year teachers to get them up to a minimum of 4% raise, which is the amount that the current state law, proposed law has. The increase in the retirement, increase in projected health insurance, operations, contractual obligations. If you recall, I indicated that those were, were things like contract escalation costs, escalation clauses. The additional amounts for charter schools and the Meeting Street School. I have two slides in here to talk, we'll talk to the funding formulas for that. Reserve for seven-day enrollment changes, when we do the seven-day enrollment changes. So, we project revenue, excuse me, we project enrollment this time of the year, and then, we do an actual head count of students who enrolled at the, after the seventh day of the school, and we make adjustments based on what additional, additional staff position may, may need to be made. And then, we still have the 5 million dollars in as a reserve for the mission critical actions that have not come out yet of that work. And it is simply the same approach that we took last year. When we put the 3 million dollars on the balance sheet, we're proposing to do the same thing with the mission critical action. Okay, so, the next, this slide here you have not seen before. This is some of the work, some of the work, not all of the work that the chief officers and their staff have been working on. And so, after we did the required increases, we had 6.9 million dollars left that we could allocate for other purposes. And so, you see what some of those other purposes are here. The first one is non-teacher salary increases. So, you saw the 12.3 or 12.4 million for the teacher salary increase. This is for all the other staff in the district. And so, with the teachers, it's 4% plus a 1.9% step, so 5.9%. With the non-teachers, it's a 1.9% step and a 1.9% cost of living that's linked to a federal index showing what those cost increases are. There's the early college amount for 1.2 million. And as I indicated, with the teacher salary piece, we have moved the fund balance associated with early college to show, to link it directly with the expenditures. And so, we have 1.1 million dollars of coming from fund balance. Same thing for the learning services priorities, 3.4, and the use of fund balance is 3 million dollars. So, with the rest of this information on this slide, the learning services priorities, the learning services compliance, the learning services expansion, the human resources components, and operations components. This afternoon, I'm just presenting the numbers to you. When we come back on April the 8th, and the chiefs will be speaking to you, they will go through in detail what those are. And I would anticipate some changes in those numbers between now and then because we're still doing those, doing those analysis and figuring out how we're going to, how we'll build the budget. I will show, point out a couple of areas here. The operations, energy savings, 1.5 million dollars, so that is 1.5 million dollars less in expenditures that we expect next year because our rates have gotten better. And then, the bound here, it says charter school coordinator. It's one of the things that's being contemplated with all the work associated with managing the administration portion of charter schools. The state charter school law allows for a fee to be applied to the revenue of charter schools so that we, if a district has a lot of charter schools, a lot of administrative costs associated with it, we can offset that by hiring their position and then charging that to charter schools. So, it's a wash in terms of zero, bringing in the revenue and what are the costs of a position would be and associated benefits. And so, all of that comes to 8.2 million dollars. And so, remaining amount to balance is saying that we're still out balanced by 1.3 million dollars. So, that means we're over the amount to be able to balance. And as I indicated a couple of minutes ago, there's a lot of work left to do between now and, until we come back to the board on April the 8th, to talk about what those numbers and those programs would look like.
Ask questions down?
At the end.
At the end.
Are you finished now?
No, it's not.
So, some of the work that I propose that need to be done, and the Art and Finance Committee has suggested the same thing, is that last week I presented projections for fiscal year, not only fiscal year '20, the budget we're developing, but fiscal years '21 and '22. Taking a look at the future and what we need to be doing now to think about how we consider making changes for the future. So, focusing on this column fiscal year '21. Down at the bottom with the additions that we, that I showed in the preceding slide, the projected budget gap, and the call that remained to balance. I'm very reluctant to call that a deficit. It's not a deficit. It's a projected budget gap, and we have to have a balanced budget, so it's not a deficit. So, that number goes to 16.2 million dollars. So, last week, when I made the presentation, that number was, I just have it down there for reference, was 5.9 million dollars. So, that means that we have added to that fiscal year '21 because of what we added in fiscal year '20. And same thing for '22, that budget, projected budget gap goes to almost 30 million dollars up from 18.9. So, part of the work that we need to be working on currently is trying to think about how we make adjustments now so that we can have a positive impact on the negative numbers there. And this is an example of some of the work that's being done, that's yet to be done. This slide, I think you've probably seen before. It came out back, I think, in the wintertime. And we added another data point on here. I'll talk about that in a second. And we took some sample schools, both high-performing, average-performing, and unsatisfactory schools, the green, yellow, and red blocks there. And what we had, what we showed initially back in the winter, actually, I guess it was early in the winter. We're still in the winter. So, the cost per pupil, we showed the teacher experience, we showed the South Carolina Red scores, both ELA and math, the enrollment, and our school suspensions. What we didn't show was teacher turnover. And so, what we showed earlier was showing that with the excellent-performing schools, that the teacher experience, its average is 14.3 years. For the average-performing schools, that number's 10.6. And then, for the low-performing schools, it's only eight years. Now, I talked with Bill Brigham over in HR a couple of times about this. And what, he gave an example of one of the schools, I don't remember which, but that there were teachers that had, so say, for instance, there was one teacher with 15 or 16 years worth of experience. Another teacher with maybe 20-something years worth of experience. And then, the rest of the teachers in the school were very, very low experience, you know, just starting out, one or two years' worth of experience. And the problem, the problem, how that is sustained, I mean, that's a problem, you know, you can imagine that, that's a problem. You take a look at the right-hand side of this slide, and you see the our school suspension for the excellent schools, nine, for the average, 26, and for the low performers, 120. So, you have the inexperienced teachers working with the, some of the most challenging work in the district. And the way that is perpetuated is through this additional data point that was added on teacher turnover. So, you take a look at teacher turnover, in the high-performing schools, it's only 10%. This is a five-year average. So, it's year after year, it's 5%, I mean, 10% for the high-performing schools, 14% for the average-performing schools, and it jumps way up to 24% for the low-performing schools. So, not only is the teacher experience low, it perpetuates itself because of this high turnover. And so, for me, it's like, it's really, it's a system, it's a system that takes the least experienced people and have them do the work that is some of the most challenging work, which is, you know, something that in my prior environments I worked in, it was the opposite, where the most experienced people are placed on the more challenging parts of the organization. And so, part of the work that we are working on now and then is how do we address that? And so, Bill Brigham talked last week about, as an example, the Clemson residency initiative. We have the grow our own program, and that includes things like teach Charleston, whether or not we want to expand that. Teach local, whether we want to expand that through the Call Me Mister program, things like the teacher cadet program. And so, those are just examples, but the data show that we really need to figure out, as we're developing the budget for this year and future years, how do we address some of these, some of these challenges? And next, going to charter school funding. So, charter school funding formula is by state law. It tells you exactly how to do the calculation. So, we begin with the district's prior year audited revenues. So, what the, you know, when our fiscal, when our financial statements are issued each year, we take those audited revenues, and that becomes the basis. We have the district's weighted per pupils. So, the weighted per pupils, you know, you have a student, it's counted as one, and then, whatever needs that that student has, there's weights put onto it. So, at the bottom here, for example, if a child is autistic, the state says that there's a weight of 2.57. And so, instead of getting funded for one position, that student will be funded for 2.57 FTEs. So, because that child has additional needs. And so, throughout the district, then, we do this computation to figure out what our total weighted pupils, number, pupils, what that number is. And then, we divide that number into the prior year audit revenues, and that comes out to a per-pupil amount on a weighted basis. And then, we simply take, take that amount and multiply it times the charter school, the charter school weighted per pupil, and come up with the charter school's revenue. the charter school weighted per pupil, and come up with the charter school's revenues. So you can see the budget, these are budget revenues, not actual revenues, that we have over those years. And so down at the bottom, so for instance, if a, if a child, if a child in elementary school, the standard is one, if that child is autistic, it's 2.57. If the child has a learning disability, it's 1.74. So whatever that highest number is, is what the funding amount is. So if, so if a child is, has all of these, the child will get, instead of the, this is looking at FY '19, instead of the $7,754 as a per pupil amount, that child will get the $19,900 allocated. And that's exactly, that's how all of our charter schools are funded. And then with the Meeting Street Elementary School over at Brentwood, we calculate a per pupil, the average per pupil amount based on these three district schools, Burns, Goodwin, and Mary Ford. And this is not by state statute, this is by contract that CCSD has with Meeting Street. So we come up with a, an average per pupil for those three schools. That number is $15,314, and we simply multiply that number times the, the number of students to come up with their funding, their revenues that we allocate to them. So one, charter schools by state statute, and the Meeting Streets by contract that we have with them. Next, so this is the last slide. So next steps, so we're at 318, Board Budget Update now. In April, when we come back from spring break, we'll go to Art and Finance meeting, give them an update, probably have the first reading of the budget ready for them. And then on the 4th, April the 8th, come back to the full board, do a committee on the whole for a budget workshop, and then you can see the cabinet various meetings we have with constituents, and then come back to the full board for a first reading of the budget on April the 22nd. So between now and the time we get back in front of you on 4/8, then that's when this work I'm talking about that needs to be done will continue to occur. So what questions do you have?
Okay, Ms. Jeffries?
I'm fine.
Ms. Green?
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to come back?
I'll come back to meet you.
Okay, Ms. Orville?
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Looks like y'all done a lot of work on this. One question, I think I know the answer to, and one question I don't. I think you told us that at the meeting, the budget workshop on April 8th, we'll hear more from the chiefs on things like human resources expansion, learning services expansion. Is that correct?
That, excuse me, that is correct.
Okay. And then on the charter school coordinator, are we, are you proposing that for the next year, we're going to charge that .25, or have we already been doing that to the charter schools?
We have not been doing that, so if we, that would be a proposal.
That would be, okay, that'd be in addition. That's all I have, thank you.
Reverend Collins?
Thank you, Your Honor. What do you call, what do you mean by non-teacher for the salary increase of 1.2 million? What do you mean when you said non-teacher salary?
Yes, sir. So that would be, that would be my staff, that would be, that would be classroom assistants, that'd be, that would be secretaries in schools, bookkeepers, anybody that doesn't have a certificate.
Anybody who's not teaching, period.
Yes, sir.
So.
And includes principals also.
Includes principals also. So 1.2, is what, a 2% raise?
It would be a 1.9% raise, a cost of living that's linked to a federal index on cost of living, and then a 1.9% average step increase.
So 3.8 total?
Yes, sir.
Per person?
That's the, oh, yes, 3.8, yes.
And that's about, how many people roughly?
Well, we have, we have about 5,500 staff, and about 3,500 of those are teachers.
So about 2,000 people? All right, hold on a minute. Page 11, we present the variation in elementary schools. In the middle, you have the Mount Zion, and Mini Hughes, and Angel Oak, and North Texas Freedom of Arts, cost of people at $9,236 for about 387 students. And so, but when you drop down to the unsatisfactory schools like Burns, and North Texas Elementary, and Mary Ford, and Shakur, it's a 40% increase, about the same, for the same amount of students.
Right.
But a lot higher suspension rate. Help me to understand, what makes it this 40% increase, additional cost, to serve the same amount of students? If the 300, that's doing the average, the average schools at Mount Zion, it's only 9,000, 9,236, why would 389 be almost $14,000, which is more than 40% increase, about 45% increase almost?
Are you asking what, the reason for the increase?
Such a dramatic increase in cost to serve the same amount of kids.
So that is driven primarily through the additional resources that those schools receive, so you know that the schools are, these are priority schools, comprehensive support schools, and those schools receive additional funding from, from the state. These are some of our most high poverty schools that get additional resources because of their poverty.
Right, so that's money from the state and federal government, right?
And locally, yes, sir.
So that doesn't really come out of our budget, does it?
It does. It does, so it's our general fund, the state funds, federal funds, so it's all of it.
I guess what I'm asking is, since the state gave us the money for it, the federal government, they gave us the money for it, something would have less of an impact, because we've been given additional resources for these kids, wouldn't that be, wouldn't have less impact against the budget?
It does not, because the rules require us to do something called, to not supplant. So you can't take money that from the, that otherwise would go through to a student from the general fund and say, I'm going to use it for something else because I have the state money, or the federal dollars coming in. So those dollars that come in from the state and from the federal government have to be in addition, and this is by law, be in addition to, to what they, what those students are receiving through our general fund.
I understand what you're saying. We're receiving this kind of funds for the kids, and basically you total, you total enough the cost.
Yes, sir.
Basically, you total enough the cost for all. All right, when you're, let me find the page of the song. Come out of the house, let it ready. You go back a little bit. Thirty, page seven, the bottom, the funds available for allocation, $34.5 million. And then you begin to break down, after the pages, you begin to break down some different things the money can be used for. And I'm concerned, curious to know, why isn't there a line, or a section for Head Start?
Does it sound budget?
Yeah, they got their own. That's true.
So a couple things. So one, there's the separate budget, so this is general fund budget, so it's separate funding for Head Start. And also, what is not seen here in this presentation are those things that are currently being funded. So these are things that we're proposing as additional changes to what's currently being funded.
Right, so.
Reverend Collins, if you can, just write.
Your Honor, I don't know if you're familiar with the Head Start. But I'm sure you are, I mean, the finance man, you are. Know that we, they have to grant, they're operating under the grant, federal grant, this is a 20% matching fund. But our Head Start program, the reason I asked about it being, part of it being in our budget, not that it doesn't have a separate budget, but they pick up, they pick up the slack or the lack that they don't have, the high turnover rate for employees, tremendous turnover, they can't function effectively at what they, what they experience on the budget they have. And so what I'm asking you to do is to consider adding a line that we can try to compensate that can maintain good employees and teach our children. Otherwise, we have a Head Start program in place, we won't have stable teachers, we'll have classroom assistants, it's be constant turnover, and if we have that, the kids can't learn. So we need to consider what their needs are and how to get them into the budget, which is not a whole lot of money they need, but that budget's enough. Like another thing, when the teachers get an increase, I learned that the money for the increase is not necessarily coming out of GOF, it's coming out of their budget, their budget. Each increase takes their budget down lower and lower, and we need to address that. So if you could add a place in there we can talk about, Head Start in their future, I appreciate that.
All right, so what we do, like we're doing the research and analysis on the slide that showed with the teacher experience level and turnover, we'll do that analysis on this component and then see what that, how we present that.
Mr. Garrett?
Yep, I'm just tagging on to that. Along those lines, I think it may, if we're doing that, to also look at, is that too many dollars that we put in that, would that be better spent and put in towards our own CD classes in which we're getting certified teachers? Just as a conversation piece, obviously, we're not.
Rather than relying on the Head Start federal funds and those rates.
You need to ask them to that, right?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, Ms. Coats?
No, thank you.
Ms. Hollishead?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Kennedy, I'll email you on what I really need, but question, I noticed last week you showed us a 20% so increase in revenue brought in. So you're pretty much saying that 20% that we take in and increase, that we have to, we spending all of that?
So I don't recall the percentage I showed you. So we, so we had like $507 million worth of revenue projected for this year.
Yeah, an increase.
Maybe five, and then so, and so we're showing like, I think, $530 million for next year, so, so that's substantially less than 20%. So from roughly $510 now to $530, it'd be $20 million increase as opposed to 20%.
Okay. And then our budget is based off the attendance from this year, not what we project in the future, correct?
So it's based on what we project for next year, for the future, for next year, and it's the state adjusted based on what the actuals are. So for instance, we did a projection for fiscal year '19, the state will make a final adjustment based on our 135th day enrollment numbers this year, for this year.
Okay. And then going back to that sheet that Mr. Collins was talking about, the variation in elementary schools, that disparity or the difference in funding that you see where you said on the middle average school rating versus the unsatisfactory school rating, is that extra money comes from Title I money, or that's just, is that portion, that's the federal money that beefed that up with Title I money?
Well, a portion, a portion of it's Title I, but a good portion of it is state money for the priority funds, the comprehensive support school type dollars. So a significant portion is state money.
Okay. And, and going back, you had in here, funding for charter schools, I think it was like 1. something million dollars, and then Meeting Street Academy, $3 million, what was that for?
Are you looking from last week, or?
Yeah, last week, and you got it in here too, I see, again.
Yeah, I don't think I showed it, showed the.
Yeah.
What those increases are, Mr. Hollishead, are?
That's for Brentwood?
He's talking about the Brentwood budget in this page.
So any changes in those, in the numbers, either up or down, that's allocated to charter schools for Meeting Street, in this case, it'd be up in both cases, is because of the student count, that's two factors for the charter schools. Our revenue increased, and so when the revenue increased, the charter schools get a portion of that. And then the other factor of the equation is the number of students in their, in their weights.
They get the increase of that.
That's right. With Meeting Street, there's a proposal, what we show in these numbers here for Meeting Street for next year is an expansion at Brentwood to the sixth grade. So if that, if that occurs.
Got you.
We show those numbers in here.
And we have to justify and pay that revenue.
That's right.
I got you. One more thing, Reverend, I can think, let's see. I got a few more questions, but what I'll do, Mr. Kennedy, I'll email you, I got it written on the sheet that you gave us last week.
Okay.
And then I'll email you my questions.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Reverend Collins, have one final question he'd like to ask you before we.
Yeah, one, but it has seven parts. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
How can we get the, the breakdown to find out, to see just how much federal dollars and state dollars and local dollars, additional resources for the priority schools like Burns, Mary Ford, Shakur, North Texas Elementary? How can we, how can we see, is that posted somewhere?
Well, I don't know if it's posted, we have, we can bring it at the next workshop, but we have that.
And my concern is, if we're getting all the additional resources, while the schools still unsatisfactory, that must have an increase. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. At this time, I entertain a motion for us to go into executive session.
Second.
All right, so move.
We're going to reconvene and open the session. At this time now, we're going to have a moment of silence.
I ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the House of United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the charter school contract.
Second.
Okay, so we're probably moving second for the approval of the charter school contract I ask that you take this time to place your vote. Could a motion pass, seven, with one extension? Item 4B, is there a motion?
I move to uphold the hearing officer's recommendation.
Second. It's been properly moved in second.
One amendment.
I'm sorry?
Going off a friendly amendment. The teacher can reapply.
So I don't accept that as a friendly amendment, you're welcome to try, have the board vote on it.
Okay. All right, item 4B.
Let the board vote on it, then. Let the board vote on the amendment, sir.
Do you have a second? There's a second. Yeah, Todd's second.
Yeah, we can't vote on the amendment.
You can vote on the amendment.
We're going to vote on the motion, that's the stage.
You have to vote on the amendment first, I believe.
No, sir. Yes, 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 yes.
Just the motion.
Oh, just, hold on.
The amendment, wait a minute, the amendment come first.
Do you have a second?
Can you give me a second, that it can reapply?
All right, okay.
Why should I give a second for that?
All right, Reverend Collins, you want to restate your amendment?
Okay.
The teacher can reapply, the employee can reapply, the employee can reapply.
Under what circumstances, any or just any time?
They can reapply.
Okay. So you need a second, and then we vote on whether we agree to add that as an amendment.
Is there a second to that amendment?
See if there's not.
All right, motion fails. The current, item 4B is on. I hope, guys, allow me to please lead, and you will cast your vote accordingly. Item 4B, personnel matter, teacher appeal, it's been moved by Ms. Coats, second by Mr. Garrett, your vote is before you, I ask that you please cast your vote.
Have you voted, Reverend?
No, I only have.
No, I only have a two, three, two options really. Abstain, A, or I, or, or no. I don't have no.
Should have an abstain, a nay, and an i.
I don't have the, have I and abstain only. And now, it says no.
It's a glitch.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's where no is, though.
There's no. All right.
Nay, okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to...
All right, hold one second, Mr. Garrett. Let's just see how the motion passed first. I mean, whether it passed or failed.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
What's, Julie, what's...
Okay, seven, seven, one. All right, item...
Mr. Chair, I move to approve extending CCSD's contract with Meeting Street at Brentwood to include grade six.
Second.
Second.
Reverend Collins?
Please vote.
Okay.
All right, I move to approve the...
All right, motion, just one second. Uh, six yes, two abstention. Item 4D.
Okay, I move to approve the Audit and Finance Charter change.
Second.
Okay, motion passes seven. Yes, one abstention. Item 4E.
I move to approve the homeschool application that's in the March 18 Executive Session Materials. Second.
Okay, item passed unanimously. Uh, item 5A, B, C, and D is special recognition.
Good afternoon, Chair Mack, Vice Chair Darby, Board members, Dr. Postlethwaite, special guests. We have several special recognitions this evening. I want to start by recognizing the South Carolina State Nurse of the Year, Ms. Jill Bergen. I'd like her and Melissa Prendergrass, who's our Director of Nursing, to please come forward. Charleston County School District is proud to announce Jill Bergen, the school nurse at Styles Point Elementary School. She was named the 2019 South Carolina School Nurse of the Year by the South Carolina State, South Carolina State Department of Education and the Department of Health and Environmental Control this week. This is the second straight year a nurse from CCSD has earned this honor. Last year, Mary Ford's Elementary Schools' nurse won the award. Ms. Bergen has been a nurse for 25 years, including the past 14 at Styles Point. She's also implemented numerous school-wide health promotion and health strategies, all of which have had positive impacts on students, staff, and family. She will officially be honored in Columbia at the 38th Annual SCASN Conference. Let's congratulate Ms. Bergen, to whom we are grateful for her continued commitment to student health. Thank you. I'd now like to ask Ishrak Haak, his teacher, Ms. Ruth, and Principal Spencer, to please come forward. Ishrak's mission of providing clean water for his parents' hometown in Bangladesh earned him first place at the South Carolina Department of Defense Junior Science and Humanities Symposium in Columbia earlier this year. The sophomore at Academic Magnet High School was awarded a $2,000 scholarship and a trip to Albuquerque, New Mexico for the National Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, which will occur in late April. Haak will be one of 230 students from around the world competing for additional scholarship money at the event in New Mexico. He's a part of the Academic Magnet Science Club, and his project titled "A Novel Approach to Removing Arsenic from Drinking Water for Low-Income Populations in Rural Villages" highlighted a house, household water purification system he developed. It is currently being used in several homes in a town in Bangladesh. Congratulations, Ishrak. We are proud of you. I'd now like to ask Team Burns, the CPN Social Studies Bowl winners, to please come forward. I'd like to ask Principal Taylor, AP Grant, Teacher Dugan, as well as Ms. Sherri Snaps Williams, Executive Director for CPN, please come forward. Scholars from Edmund A. Burns Elementary School captured the 2019 Charleston Promise Neighborhood Social Studies Bowl title earlier this month. The CPN Social Studies Bowl gives students an opportunity to showcase what they've learned in school when it comes to history, government, geography, and sociology. Burns not only took the overall championship, but also earned wins in the third and fifth grade levels. Jonathan Dugan, Burns Math Interventionist, serves as the coach of the Social Studies Bowl team. Under his leadership, fifth grader David Turner helped lead the Burns to victory. Good job, Team Burns. Thank you. Thank you. And, and lastly, I'd like to ask Rachel Stanley from the American Heart Association to please come forward. Charleston County School District has, has shown true commitment and passion by supporting the American Heart Association through our school-based programs, Jump Rope for Heart and Hoops for Heart during the last school year. Rachel's going to come forward and tell us more about our, about the schools who've participated this past year. Rachel?
Well, y'all have a seat. Press down.
They got to respect the decorum of the meeting.
If I can just have your attention for a moment, I understand your position that you're taking, but we're in the middle of recognizing, special recognition, so I'm going to ask if...
But these are special recognition, too. They want to be educated.
Well, I understand that, sir. So if you would just allow the students to please take a seat so that we can continue on with the recognition.
You want to get some chairs?
We, we have an overflow room. We can make sure that happens.
They need to stay together. They're not going to be separated.
No, no.
You sit right here.
Now, you can't sit on the floor. You cannot sit on the floor. They have to respect, this is, this is a board meeting in the public. This is not a... So I will repeat myself one more time.
I don't care if you repeat yourself ten times. You want to lock these together? What's your plan?
Well, now I'll go back.
We ain't want to be.
Now I'll go back to the session.
Second, second, second.
Okay, second. Probably move in second, Holy Spirit, my number's...
Bye.
These are...